Alright, everybody. Um, welcome, everybody, to the, what are we now, June 2023 meeting of EGPOA's Board. I'm Patrick Kinnell, President of the Board. Obviously, I'm on Zoom and remote, so Alana is going to lead us in the room. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. First order of business is, well, of course, the pledge. Why don't we start with that? It's really hard to hear on Zoom, so Alana, I may have to just tell you to take over completely at some point. But first is our special meeting of the members and vote. This is really a test of our electronic voting system that we're going to be rolling out this coming annual meeting and election of directors around Labor Day weekend, whenever that may be. We don't have a date yet. So pursuant to Article Five, Section Six of our bylaws, we need to have three folks volunteer as inspectors of the election. This election is working a little differently, I understand. So while we made paper ballots available to people who wanted them in the office, no one actually requested a paper ballot this round, so this is an entirely electronic vote. So the results and the counting of that vote will, has already happened by our third-party vendor. So it will be up to the inspectors and Brittany and Marvin to go open that email and then we can find out our results. So I guess Marvin, Brittany, and Alana, can you identify three people in the room who could serve as inspectors to the election and go with you to open Brittany's email?
Yes.
Right there.
You could probably share your screen back as well. You want to do that or?
Let them get up.
There we go. Where is it?
We didn't rehearse this, so it's fun to see how it goes. And just so everybody recalls what we're voting on, we had Dan Woodruff from our community sketched up by hand a couple of concept logos for the Emerald Greenway, which is the old golf course property that we're going to undertake and adapt the reuse of. I want to be clear about that project again. There are no capital funds, no operating funds that are identified that are going to this project right now. It's to be able, so far, a 100% volunteer project to identify walking trails and light exercise stations and really make that an open green space dedicated for EGPOA members and exclusively for EGPOA members. All the rules and that stuff later on, we can talk about those in another point in time. Alright, with that, I'm going to ask the Secretary to call the roll. We'll start our regular board meeting.
Here.
Here.
Yeah. Tom Getz.
Here.
Thank you. Leslie.
I'm here. I'm here.
Thank you. Joel.
Here.
Alex. Here.
Here.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Alana, please.
I'm going to read the results. So sketch number one is the sketch at 189.75 votes. Sketch two earned 70.25.
So that's roughly 250 some odd voters from this electronic test vote. Is that right?
There were 260 votes.
Pretty good.
Than where we were last time?
Yes, more than the volume.
So without a lot of advertisement, without any paper balloting, without any stamps, without any office time, without any expenditure other than what we're paying for this test vote, which I think was a few hundred bucks, we managed to increase participation. I think this is a really good thing. Test was a success, I would say. Congrats to Logan. I won. Alright, next up is our minutes. Have one of your board book, board members, if you've had a chance to review those, can we get a motion to approve?
Open your board meeting at a special meeting.
We have to call the regular board meeting to order because the special meeting is done. Do you want me, do you want?
Alana, do that. That'd be great. Thanks.
Okay, so we're going to call it order the regular board meeting for June 23, 2024. We've already done this, this has already taken roll, so we are going to start with the approval of the minutes, which is on tab. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the 5:18 regular meeting? A motion, Patrick seconded. All in favor? Any refusals, any abstentions? Far none. The motion passes. Patrick, do you want me to go through the rest?
It's a little easier. Just, it's very hard to hear from the room on Zoom.
Next on the agenda is the management report.
Okay. Two things. The staff has been building, working, getting some stuff done. The gates have all been prepared. The gate of the dam is functioning properly. We did have, last week, we had some issues with the gate in the beach area. The bolts had snapped off. So that has been addressed and it now has a new closing mechanism, which seems to be working very well. There is a little bit of a time delay in the latching part of it, but that I'll have adjusted on Monday, so they should be all functioning and working. Landscaping has been updated around the pool. The, two weeks ago, they started putting in the basketball hoops at the outdoor court here. That was finished this week. So there is the new hoops and station poles and blacktop. The old ones were removed out of blacktop, so that's all been taken care of. Over at the pool, the children's playground, we had leftover retaining wall block from the project. So we're using them over at the playground to take out the robed six-by-sixes. That should be finished this week. We were just short of about 50 blocks. We had to wait for the blocks to come in. They come in last Thursday, so that'll be addressed as well. I do have some stuff with the pool. Do you want me to wait for, do that now or? We, I guess it's a good and bad thing. We're experiencing growing pains. Obviously, it's a nice facility, so we're seeing a lot of use. My staff is just coming on. We got to remember they're pool attendants, not lifeguards. They're kind of different, but I do have a staff meeting this week with them to get them all up to speed. They're out of, just out of school. The pool is opened almost a month earlier than we usually do, so staffing's been hit and miss, so. You know, we do have growing pains. There are some rules that need to be addressed. And I'll discuss them with the board. One of the problems is, is the lap lanes. We have to address that somehow. We do, the lap swimmer is supposed to get the right of way, but how the rules are kind of written, it doesn't give them exclusivity to the lane. So that's been an issue. My problem is, is when my staff starts crying over it, you got to remember, these young kids are just there to enforce the rule. They're not making them. Nobody should be going after them if there is an issue. We have many procedures in place. If you feel you don't get it and you're not getting the attention you should get from any staff members there, just call the office. And you may say, well, I'm calling the office on a Saturday. Nobody's there. Follow the emergency procedures. Somebody will get that. There's been, the other issue is, is when pool closes at eight o'clock, we realize it's hot, so there's been a lot of people there. Unfortunately, that's the whole pool area. The pool is fenced in and it has to be fenced in by state law when the pool is closed. It has to be fenced in. Unfortunately, our pavilion area, laxing areas that are in the pool are in the fenced-in area. So we all have to leave when the pool's closed. It's been a hot week. We've had stomach issues with splat. I mean, most of it is, is unfortunately, it's just coming down to respect. And that's really what we got to do is respect each other and then pool to pool. It's just like it's in your backyard. You know, we just have to respect each other and hopefully that'll make things go a little bit better. We've had a lot of complaints about running on the pool deck. We're, our staff is not babysitters, so the parents should be at the pool with the kids. We did have, there was a holiday on Wednesday. We were short-staffed on Wednesday. It's the first time that a holiday really took, took place in that manner, so. And we were open for it. Usually we're closed for it, so we'll try to stay for that in the future. But, you know, basically, I'm just asking for the respect and if you have an issue, just please don't go after my staff members. That's, there's no reason to have two staff members crying if something happened to them. So, and I will address that with them this, this week when we have a staff meeting because we're all out of school. But that's where we are so far.
Michael, can you clarify what the security hours are at each of the locations? The days.
They're two, two, ten. They overlap. They're at both facilities, but they also have two days. Just so happened like this week, Wednesday was a day off, so we, we had no security there and we had no office staff either. All this happened at the same time.
But that's being addressed for the youngster.
Well, the, the, we, we have securities five days a week. Five days a week at both locations. We have security five days a week at both locations.
I'm going to say on Wednesday. Will they be in laps of coverage? The light jenna and the security. On the rest of, for the rest of the summer.
The, the securities days off rotate between four days, four days a week. So next week would be Tuesday, Monday, something like that. Or Thursday, Monday, something like that. They're, they're always there Friday's that it is. So it kind of just washes, washes away the sort of rain. I mean, we can go to seven days a week for that. That's, you know, just something, I, I do notice that there if we wanted to switch up and do seven days a week at the pool, we can do. Over here, there is less activity on the past two weeks now that the pool is. So that, you know, we might, if you guys want, I can switch that. We're just leaving it up to me.
You know, I did, I guess, just to follow up on that's a question. Do you, do you think, so you're training, doing a training session with the pool attendants this week, most of those people are? Do you, do you think that those people are, once they do this training session, are good to go to be alone in the pool? Or do you think that they need backup? They need additional dollars?
There's right now. No, I don't think they'll need additional staffing there. It's just a matter of getting everybody on the scene.
What's their job?
Is their job, their job is just to watch the coming and going and checking, you know, that they're, they're not they're not a lifeguard, you know, so somebody running on the pool deck, they should let the pool deck. I mean, you're, we're talking about the same thing that all it seems. The, that should really be up to their parents to maintain that. I mean, going into this, when we were getting rid of lifeguards, we knew that, you know, the attendants really aren't going to be the enforcers there. They're there to make sure that the chemical makeup is good on the pool. Everything is, there's no stuff laying around. They're, they're not, they're not our security there too.
I think they have to be there to force the pool. They're running on the deck. Right. I was in the pool yesterday and the boys were throwing balls and people on some guy, they hit the bottle, but no one told them. But no one, no one, you know, and they, they, there's chicken fights going on. There's, there's Sydney Judd with the noodles.
Guys, let's not forget, these are kids. What do we do when we're kids?
Thank you.
But wait, 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 wait. The problem is, is no rules being enforced. So my background, wait, wait, my background, I, I opened the screen now, okay? It was a section and it was on the privilege section. It was cool. I was one of the lifeguards. And there was, the rules got followed. Now, whether it be a lifeguard or a pool attendant, we need people to enforce the rules.
I just want to say.
We also need people to clean up. Someone said to me that, you know, they left at night and the socks were there, the bandage were there. There's no policing of the pool. There's no, the stomach, you know, I spoke about. We need them to clean the stomach. I cleaned the stomach when I was, when I was a lifeguard, pool attendant, whatever you want to call it.
So I can keep, he had them valid. That's right. I have one little kid, so it's a struggle telling him to stop running 25 times. So their sides to both are the story and it's kind of a little bit of a delicate balance. I think there is a little bit of room for improvement with pool attendants. Go ahead and say something, but again, if they're getting kind of torn apart and they're nervous to talk. So, so as a community, I think maybe we could all be a little bit more conscious to saying, these are young kids. They're kind of learning their job a little bit. Let's help them. Let's talk to them. Let's encourage them to go ahead and, you know, sometimes it's good. Like if I have a pulitzer that say to my kid, you really can't run or your mom is going to have to make you leave. It helps, you know, not that you can't manage your own children or you can't talk to your own kids, but it's kind of like you tell them 25 times and, you know, it's, it's a little difficult. So I can see both ends of the story and there definitely is 100% a tiny bit of room for improvement with them kind of coming to the area a little bit more and, and saying.
Well, I think what we could do is let's see what happens after our staff meeting this week. We're going to talk to them. We're going to reinforce that they, what they need to do there and let's see how.
Get some feedback from them.
From there.
Yeah.
Right. This is the, this is the order to say though. Did they get a whistle?
Yeah, I think it was.
I mean, did they get it? It's probably the standard, sure. Blow the whistle, people look at the attention. Like when you close the pool, you blow the whistle in time.
I, I know how that, you know, ties in.
Well, it does because of.
Well, I, I understand and I'm thinking legally with the, you know, department health and stuff, are they going to consider that a lifeguard and that sends us in the other direction? I'm not sure.
Let's, well, let's just see. You guys told us there's a training session this week. That's.
Well, also with, with that, we've had also.
If somebody's drunk? Well, we, we considered that when we eliminated.
I understand that. What I'm saying is, that's what a lifeguard job is really, you know, it's multiple, it's a broad range of things. And just, what about, will the attendants know how to use the AEDs? Yes.
Not on Tuesday. There is a schedule. We have scheduled with member of the community to teach them all of our staff to use the AED. We were just waiting for everybody to be done with school. That's, they're all basically. Also, we will be following up, I will be following up with security as well because there are issues there that we have to address.
Thank you.
You have some more stuff. Patrick, if you're on here, we have the Treasure Lake Town Home proposed project. An update from you.
Yes, thanks. So as many people know, but we want more people to know, there's a proposed development abutting Treasure Lake called the Treasure Lake Town Homes. It's already been on the Town of Thompson Planning Board's agenda, but it is on again this coming Wednesday, the 26th at 7:00 PM. You can log on and, and learn more by Zoom. It is not in the public comment section yet, but it is up for discussion slash potential action items to be determined by the planning board, which is noted on their agenda as for conceptual review. So it's in the early stages of its review. It's a proposed project where the developer will build 60 townhomes. I believe there's a shul planned and some other self-contained community amenities for, it, it's not an HOA as far as we can tell, but it, it looks to be sort of a, a larger community coming in. And so with that sort of density, obviously, we're concerned. We're looking at the history of that property, what it's been zoned for, and we'll be engaging with the Town of Thompson Planning Board. We'll talk a little more in our executive session, board members specifically about any strategic issues we may need to address, but at least publicly, what I will say is that we're monitoring the project and encourage folks who live along that area and live along Treasure Lake who are EGPOA members to engage yourselves and get involved and learn more by going to the Town of Thompson Planning Board meetings. The best, and when the public comment period comes around, if you have thoughts, let that be known. It, it really does help what the government officials to, to know what the neighbors are thinking and feeling. So that's all the update that I have on that. I know there'll be, there were discussions and comments in the Oversight Committee meeting recently that Earl led. And I, we all have a report on that. That's fine, but the position of the board currently is that we're looking at it. We understand there's concern and we want folks to engage and we'll, we'll have more to say, I guess, as we learn more. Any board member questions? Okay. One last, yeah, sorry.
It says water level.
No.
No. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Any other questions?
The one, the one. Yeah.
Okay. So, building off our successful vote for the Greenway logo project, unfortunately, some negative side to talk about. I just wanted to give the community an update and board members an update, which you've already seen by email. There have been reports of serious, serious problems with some folks on ATVs on our Greenway property or old golf course property. Jose, I'm not sure if you're in the room and apologies, I just can't quite see it. Hi, Jose. Jose's brought this to our attention. He had a specific run in. He called law enforcement. He dealt with what he needed to deal with, but there's a bigger issue for, for us, which is, again, and we're, we're seeing ATVs on that property and we have to figure out some rules and some, the rules are there. We have to figure out some manner of enforcement. One option, and Michael's already put in the request, is that the Sullivan County Sheriff's Office has an ATV patrol. Who knew? And they're going to be dedicating an officer to, to make sure that they're watching out for that Greenway property. I don't know specifically what that looks like, whether there's a schedule, whether it's a stop by every now and again, whether it's targeted enforcement, excuse me, we'll find out more. But that's one way that we're attacking it. Michael's looking into trail cams as well. The problem becomes, we don't have any Wi-Fi, obviously, or any power out there, so we'll have to figure out what, what options are available to us if there are cameras, but if we don't have real-time monitoring of those, really, is it very, very much worth it? But again, those are options that we'll consider in way, but for now, we're going to try to engage the sheriff's office a little bit more on that to, to try to stem the ATV problem that seems to be recurring up there.
And, and I have brought this to the board's attention for several months, I will say. I mean, not the last two months, but whatever. That Mr. Tucker, he is on Piccadilly. He's been having serious issues with ATVs and such on his back porch, so. He's been even thinking about putting nails out there for them, so, or getting a BB gun.
That.
I, I know that and I said, no, you can't do that, but I have brought to the attention his issues as well. Luckily, you know, he hasn't been threatened like Jose was, but I wouldn't get it, you know, I don't want to get to that point because he's, you know, he's an elderly guy and I would be very concerned for his safety.
Leslie, I, I'm, I'm sorry, Leslie. Tucker, has this been recently or last year?
It's been within the last year, the last year. I have mentioned it a couple of times.
I thought maybe it was with this incident.
Nine thirty, zoom by, slow down and look at the house. I was sitting outside with my kids and moving. Nine thirty PM. Sir Parker wasn't even doing that.
Michael, can you, I wear more at with the, with the discussion with the sheriff.
They, there wasn't also an incident last week with up and down, legislature drives out with a four-wheeler running around through the community, so they dropped a little bit in the area. Spoke to anybody. I've heard any updates.
You have not yet reached up to the sheriff.
No, I have reached. I haven't heard any. So, and one of the questions, that's why I was asking the question collectively, if this was something just recently, because last weekend they were around, but I didn't believe there was any problems. So.
You know. Sorry, go ahead.
You know, I, I don't, do you want me to go further with this and try and keep people out or do we want to? I mean, there was discussions about, you know, just put boulders there to keep, for those type, types of vehicles, boulders aren't going to do anything. They're going to go or they're just going to go around into the tree line and go, you know, go through the tree line. It's, you know, it's something we've got to figure out and at least in those access points at this time, you know, how to do this.
But you see a lot of them now more on the road. It just happened last night. And you can see them going up and down on my road, same, same way, but.
Right.
I never had any encounter or any of them, but I in the corner where I live, when Tom Gannon's in that corner, that's a tough corner. They come around and, you know, some of our residents go by there a little quick, you know, it's going to be sooner later. It's going to be a, an issue.
I think everybody should be encouraged, all of these, anytime there's an incident, because that is going to get it on their radar before then just you reaching out and, you know, definitely start making a report every single time. And they're going to put their presence here to try to help hopefully a little bit. They're not going to want to keep. And they're gonna put their presence here to try to help hopefully a little bit. They're not gonna wanna keep. I'm getting a ton of phone calls. I have to.
Beverly is right. The the squeaky wheel gets the oil. So if if you see it, you know, just. Probably call and. Call and let her know and then they'll get get somewhere and they'll also help Jones issue as well. Not just Jones, but the the issue with them on. And if they're on the road or on the golf course, call.
But if it's the sheriff's department that we're partnering with, make sure that that's what you're calling.
Yeah.
Well.
State police and state police.
Yeah.
You you actually, you you just have to call nine one one and let them. Let them do their job. You call, you probably call nine one one. They'll decipher how you gotta get a hold of it and they'll. They're very well trained and they'll take care of whatever you need to get take care of. If you're falling. Uh, a desk. Or or directly. It's probably gonna end up to them anyway, so just call nine one one and let them know what the problem is.
So it's my understanding that we're permitting to have, as long as this with this conversation with the sheriff's office, to have them on patrol?
Yes. As soon as, you know, they. And it.
Whatever they offer.
Right, but but, you know, and it falls back to calling. Because if there's only one member of the community falling. They're not gonna act so quickly. Those if if members see them fall, I see there was a commentator that popped up on the street. They ride up my road all the time. Well, as soon as you see him on your road, you should call. Call and let them know. That's what we have to do. We have to call and let them know.
Yeah, and let me let me just close this out. That that's great advice. Um, everybody that, you know.
Here, there, online, they're here and everything to talk. Cause you're sitting right in front of me.
Nothing to hide.
Right, I'm not saying you have anything to hide, cause you can't hear or anything else.
Sorry. Let me let me just close this out, guys, and we can move on. Um, obviously, uh, the advice, call the police if you have a problem. Um, do not engage in self-help. Um. Any of the ideas that we heard earlier are bad ideas. Um, please call, report it. Call nine one one first. Make sure you report it to the office as well, so they're aware of what's going on. Uh, but that that's as much as we can do and and by all means, don't confront any of these people. I think Jose, um. Uh, had a a real frightening enough incident and is a, a good example of of how those things could escalate. Um, and thankfully, no, no harm came to him, so, uh, but we just ask folks to. Get the police engaged. All right, let's close that out. Um, and Michael will follow up with sheriff's office and let's move on. Alana?
Okay, um, Michael, we have one more note under your report, which is the Treasure Lake.
Treasure Lake Water Level, it's coming. Last night we had a little bit of help, it rained. Um, it's it's slowly coming back. Um, I'm not sure, you know. We do it, the vegetation freeze off every two years. Um. Not sure what's gonna happen with with all the. The low water, but, uh. We'll we'll just keep an eye on. There's nothing really I can do. To get water in there quickly. Um. We just have to wait for it to come back.
Okay, that next, any any other questions from board members for the management report? Okay, next up is, um, the financial review from the treasurer for the May twenty twenty.
Alright, so, um, last month, our income, um, twelve thousand dollars overall on our income. Uh, we had, um, uh. A little fee to commit from Lake D's and dock rentals, so that'll. Uh, we'll got a little bit there. Uh. Administrative payroll seems to be. Pretty flat to what our budget is year to date. Um. Our workers' comp insurance came in last month, so we were a little higher on the insurance, but that'll level out over the year. Um, pool, obviously, it's gonna be. I mean, it's a pool season, so expenses are gonna be, um, continue to hit us over there. Uh, we have been noticing, uh, quarterly bill billing on the electric, so. It looks like you're slightly under one month and then. Months later, you're three times what you should be for your electric. So we gotta take that into consideration, um, like. We were pretty flat to budget, but, um. Once the electric bill continues to come in, we'll change that. Uh, total expense last month was eighty thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars on a budget of ninety thousand five hundred seventy-three. So we're under budget nine thousand seven hundred, uh, bringing us year to date twelve thousand fifty-four dollars on the budget. Um, that's pretty much it for the, uh. The main unissues.
Any questions from board members?
Question. If one.
I actually have a question for Michael. When are, uh, we have not shut off, um, accident control yet for the assessment? When does that happen?
The thirtieth.
Do you want the thirtieth, still on the thirtieth, so yeah.
Well, uh, that's a good point, and you should say that a little louder, so make sure people hear it.
Hey, your assessment by the thirtieth or you won't be able to. But Anthony, Jenna's there, so if you if you happen, if your key card access is. Um, not offline, you'll just know and you can handle it right there. That's the purpose of Jenna being there.
Sure. What's the assessment during the day, what day?
Till I first, uh, during the weekend, during, till I.
What's she talking? She talking about the assessment?
Yeah, so there's, right. The seven twenty-five, obviously. And just so everybody knows, uh, when your key card gets cut off, if it's on a weekend, Jenna is there, but if it, there's usually a time delay. So you pay there in person, but if you're coming into the office, they try to get you online as fast as possible, but sometimes they're twenty-four hours. And you have to be able.
I have questions about the the project document that Dan sent out, but I think we can move through the the financials, the monthly financials first. So. I have project, I have questions about the. The project that Dan sent out in advance to the board earlier after this month, but I'd like to discuss that, but that's something we can treat that as separate from monthly financials. We can get on that.
So before we take that question, I'm gonna ask for our motion to approve the May twenty twenty.
Sure.
First month comes out, second, all favor.
I.
May accusations are none, the motion passed. That goes against you.
Um, so. First of all, Dan, thank you for sending that up. I think. Last, last year about this time. To send out, you need to update it. I mean. First thought suggests that we we. Or or to send out another. Uh, on spending, maybe maybe it's not that cheap. It'll be developed and. So. I guess the the question about the, uh, A R. Sort of billing. Makes sense, or we're we have kind of high receivables, but my guess is that because we're still we're still taking it.
It's not necessarily.
Uh, so. On the additional construction costs. Uh. I I guess my question for Michael is. Is are there any other construction costs? Or agents or H payments that are not on this sheet?
No, that's pretty much it. I did meet with. Uh. Yes, what's not on that sheet is, I'm sorry. What's not on that sheet is, uh, the parking lot. Lights was asked to be. Added into that. So that is not on that sheet because we haven't got fine bids on them.
So on this additional work, it's seventy-five thousand for paving, twenty thousand as a gas for root fish and then another five thousand for miscellaneous. Um, do you have a guest minute on the lights?
No.
No, okay. And then are there any? I know we have, um, an eleven thousand dollar-ish H payable to D N C to be owed any other related to D N B.
I'd rather discuss that in executive session.
Just trying to get a sense of my my concern. Is there, is there any other, like, besides the the additional work listed, uh, the parking lot, the root fish, the lighting and the miscellaneous repairs? Is there any other ongoing work that's being billed to this project? In. On the parking, the striping, the parking. On what, a parking lights? I can't hear you.
It's right.
But it's right, yeah, yeah, it's in that, yeah, that's in that. And then, so my my last question. Uh, is just, maybe this is just a kind of order of operations question, but in the original revised cap. Members approved, part of these, part of these monies are supposed to go to refilling reserves, um, including the dam reserve. And, um. This sheet doesn't list. Any of those funds being earmarked as bad yet. Um. When are we gonna start earmarking those funds out of the money that we're taking in to start replenishing those reserves?
So it's supposed to be on an angle, they just saw. Um. That that should be something we were working to November, which is we're also supposed to pay. Uh, a one-time. Um, monthly bill cycle on our principal. Um, which we have not done. The three million dollar loan. That was the topic of conversation with the summer.
So. Okay, so I think. Just. Thinking out loud. We need to work on communicating this for the members. And then I. I think with the the parking lot and the root fish and if the lighting expenditure is. It's significant expenditure. I think we need to make sure that. We have the funds to proceed with those projects and that needs work. See those projects, make sure they're worth, I'm worried, but just since I'm. I'm worried we're we're spending a lot of money upfront. We're spending a little more money on this project upfront than we thought we were going to and. Much short at the end, so that's what I'm worried about.
So the original assessment, when I drafted it. Um. Was projected to take in four hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars to pay all of those balances that we discussed. Last year, we took in five hundred twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, so we're taking right now, we're. Our members are very, are paying.
It's funny, the plan should be. Paid in.
I think we just just in terms of cash flow, it should be a more double decision to proceed on those big five-figure expenditures.
I wholeheartedly agree.
Okay. Thank you. Again, this is thirty-four thousand. Represent, all the way to the right.
Thirty-four thousand, four seventy-two.
Thirty-four, yeah, three seventy-seven.
That's the monthly. Payment.
Okay, any other questions?
And we're down to two, two point four million. That helps any of the summary questions, you know. Since we've been paying on. The loan, we're down to two point four. That's why it's sure.
Okay. Any other things to add? Okay, moving on to committee reports, we have the lake's report from Noel. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped water company. I apologize. Went to the owl, I'm of course.
Yeah. Good morning, everybody. Um, yes. Um. Not to be redundant, but the rate case is being worked on. Um, we do have light at the end of the tunnel. We're looking. They get, no, should be September. I won't have to keep saying it's being worked on. Um, we should have a result then. Um, just, we did receive the twenty twenty-three water quality report and it's posted on our website. Anybody can take a look at that. And for the board, the end of this week, we did get our financials, so once our. Or takes a look at it, we'll circulate it to you guys. That's pretty much it.
Questions online? Now to the committee reports, go ahead, Joe.
So, um, the lake, maybe we didn't have a meeting, but we were very busy. Training session on late twenty-eight also on the time for a while, it's speedy as notes, uh. Posted online, so it's here. Uh, basically, last, in the train last about three or four hours. That's the worst, do different things, clarity and things like that, so we did that. And, uh, we had two groups of people, one went out on the Louise, one went treasure. And then those samples were taken and sent off to the, uh, the state. And I believe you'll be able to look up, get them online, but I don't have the email address. I'll get that for you. Let's hear it. People wanna see the results, so. So, uh, that's that. Um. We maybe spoke about the level of the lake, so. You know, that's, I think, you know, in the future. We gotta have a better decision as far as like when we keep them closed. As we see major reperfections from. At, um, a lot of the homeowners are very sad on trade related, but they have access to the lake, so that's creating a problem. Um, and also in the future, maybe when, I feel like Tom Gannon's, instead of dropping, I think maybe we should put some chemicals into the lake that. They cure the weak problems as well.
So what do you mean they don't have access to the lake?
You can't, I can't get out of the lake, there's so much mud.
Okay.
So, you know, I can't watch a boat. I was on the phone yesterday for about an hour. With one resident, they got stuck over by Earl's house for about an hour. Um, so it's it's a problem. Um, but I wouldn't be there. That's a, that's a big thing for me, cause I like to fish, so. Well, it. Like, uh. So again, I think if we're doing any work on the lake, Dan is gonna close someone. Okay. That's it for the lake. Any questions?
Yeah, if you wanna move right into your pool.
So the, uh, the pool, we also maybe put some, you know, third is that I spoke with Michael about it, Michael brought up now, but. I think we gotta like. Is is Anthony managing the pool, Michael? You're managing the pool, who's responsible for managing the pool?
Anthony.
So, but I'm responsible for it. I understand. So I think we gotta just clarify that. You know, we need the pool watchers to enforce the pool rules, you know, we we, by them just sitting there doesn't help us. Um, and also, if you see that there's a lot of people in the pool, maybe we might have to put people on. Yeah.
Yep, and that's all taken, Joel, but it was time, we we did, we're open much, we don't reopen this. Usually, so. And this is kind of, and that's, you know, staffing issue is usually what it is, but yeah, we'll we'll. Let us address, it is to me, uh, it's kind of a collaborative of people involved in this. There's, he's, it's his license that runs the pool. It's everybody else that's on with it, Brittany's with it, Jenna's there. We also had the pool insecurity because the ratio is there, but. Right. Give me a couple more days to address it now that everybody's stacked.
So how many pool watchers do you have? Seven, four, when you're a full.
Six.
Attendants, there's six.
Six attendants, okay.
Uh, five, five attendants.
Five, alright, so two of them I know you lose. Um, by about almost, cause you're gonna lose Jenna and Roberto, they go to college. So it'll be now, uh, three. You know, at the board, at the board.
Four, Jenna's not a pool, Jenna.
But Jenna's, excuse me. Excuse me, but she works, she's she's on the ball, of course, it's really on the ball. So, uh, she's great, okay, um.
Can I reference something, Joel, on that that item? There are quite a few people within the pool that, I, cause I talk to the attendants, I'm there almost every day. And there are people that seem to like make up their own rules that don't even exist. Uh, no yelling or no, no kids having a good time and cheering and having a good time, no splashing, no, there's just a. They make things up all the time and they want the attendant to do things about rules that don't even exist. So that's just a a general thing that's, I don't know how you handle it all. We all get, like Mike said, we all gotta work together, but kids are gonna be kids. They're gonna raise their voice and they're gonna. They're gonna do stuff. You can contain the best you can, but people in the community need to know. You know, everybody, everybody deserves a space.
So for my, so so my question is, this is all, Mike, do we have the ability to just? Post? Uh, uh, this is gonna be a, a, a challenge. It's not gonna change. We have such a wide area of folks who go to the pool. And I think to, um, everybody needs to have space.
Earl, it's hard to understand you.
Yeah, I guess, is is there the ability to post some type of rules? Um, that we can kind of all agree upon?
There are post signals. Um, you know, and and Facebook is an issue for us as well. Um, because. A lot of times. Have a few people that we hear about the problems from. The rest of it is all, um, governed by the unofficial and agreeing Facebook page that they post things. We don't monitor. So, you know, if you're having a problem at the pool and you post it on Facebook and you expect one of us to. Do something about that, we don't monitor. Nobody might want this monitored. It it it's nothing but a, what?
I I think that's, that's one of our own faults when it comes to Facebook, because we do have a Facebook official. Facebook page and, you know, it's it's not, um, daily post, there is. You know, they're very, uh.
And Leslie, we, did you have?
It's not, it's not like, uh, it's not like a daily. Session. On the face, everybody goes to. On the face, everybody goes to Facebook be- before they will go to. Send an email or something to, to the, to that effect. So I think it's our own fault that we are monitoring the Facebook page. On a daily basis. You know, in communication with the, with the community. Because the others' Facebook page, believe me, you know? Daily, daily. But we don't. So that's our own fault.
Sorry, I, I've connected, piggyback on Tom's point. I think Tom brings up a valid concern, um. It's not too much to ask kids to be respectful. But when you start policing it, and sometimes we're getting, we're approaching the policing part to the point where it's not even gonna be fun anymore. I'm not saying that we don't wanna. Get towards the rules, um, but at some point, you know. If they're gonna be kids.
Exactly, a lot, a lot of problems also.
Wild, wild question. No, I'm not, Joel, I'm not saying that it's an extreme.
It's like people tell me they don't wanna go to.
I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want it to get to extremes, um, on, on kids on one side and the policing on you. Let's just find a happy balance.
So, oh, we're gonna go, and we're gonna, Michael have the meeting with the attendants, and then we will re, be either through shop or and. And like Michael said, continue to call the office.
Or, or speak to Jen.
Or speak to Jenna, okay, bye, last to me, that.
Oh, we.
Not have a meeting.
Okay, oversight, uh, Earl, uh, included an update from his meeting on F five, is there anything you wanted to add to that, Earl?
No, we'll talk about it during executive session. My, my meeting shifted to a focus on the concerns around the town home project on Treasure Lake. There's all, I spent forty five minutes listening, taking copious notes, and so I'll bring those up during the executive session.
Moving on to strategic planning and finance, no meeting. No, okay, and then events and welcoming, that's person itself, uh, there's a fly fishing fact today at one o'clock from Mark Hanerman. That there's going to be a ban to the fireworks on the sixth, uh, July fireworks. Um, that ban is starting at eight, eight o'clock. And then usually fireworks for anybody who's new to the community begin at sundown. Time, just kind of make. It's busy, we encourage people to walk, parking is limited, um, try to. What was that? Well, that, let's not out of post about that, but there is going to be a ban, and then continue to check the, we're gonna keep sending out. The event calendar, if there are any updates or adjustments to them as we.
Yeah, um, and just, just, I, we had a. Pretty successful trivia night, um, on Tuesday, uh, and we'll try to do those at least once a month. Going forward during the summer, everybody's welcome, uh, we're doing it in the, the west, west wing. Uh, the entertainment, uh, you don't have to sign up in advance, to show up, there's presents.
There's prizes.
Also, if anybody is interested in, uh, being the M C for a trivia night, we can do it more frequently than once a month, but. We just need somebody to volunteer to step in, I'm happy to provide support for that. Um, this weekend, um, we have, this, this coming weekend, on Sunday the thirtieth, we have the second annual Emerald Olympics. Uh, we'll resend, resend, um. The signup form out for that hopefully on Monday, um, but also if you don't like Google Forms, just call office, uh, or know the office, um. Be a whole day, all ages, so you can bring your whole family and try to have, you try to structure the events so that if you have, if you, whether you have, well. There should be something for everybody, that everybody is able to do and participate in throughout the deck, so we do encourage people to come in and, um. And give it a try, uh. And then I think we can, we've set up, just a reminder, we did send out a summer calendar, we can probably resend that as well, if you're, if. If we have members who are sort of also looking for other things to do in the community outside of Emmerbring. Just reminded, the summer calendar lists, um, things like farmers markets and music in the park that are going on in surrounding communities as well, so if you're looking. Sort of, for what to do for the weekend, summer calendar isn't just an E G P away calendar, I'll kind of. Tries to kind of canvas cool things that are going on in the community as a whole, we can probably just resend that as, as well, but once again, please, uh. I had a great time with the Emerald Olympics last year. I, I think people who participated had a great time, really excited about this this coming weekend, really encouraged, if you have. Even if you can't stay the whole day and you just wanna kind of like have a couple hours of fun with your kids, like. We'd rather have you show up for a couple of events and have fun, um, and, and just, we'd like to see many people participate, it's awesome.
One other thing, on the twenty ninth, on Saturday, is a donut drop-in, so homeowners can meet over at the pool. That starts at eleven o'clock, and we will provide donuts and coffee, and it's like a meet your neighbor type of thing over at the pool.
And just a request, I'm gonna send this out, but under the community experts, we've had a lot of people ask for somebody to teach canasta, we did the Mahjong series. If anybody is a canasta expert, please reach out to Brittany or myself directly, uh, we would love to set that. Okay, the next meeting is scheduled for Sunday, July twenty first, will be in person and in Zoom. Now we are gonna take community questions, comments and concerns, we will start in the room, anybody who I call for the room has to come up to the owl. So that everybody can hear, and then we will go online to. Come on over. You could just stand somewhere around the table, this is probably your best bet over here, okay? And then just please state your name, so that we can have that for them.
Uh, good morning, I'm Dr. Escobar, I live in Club Lane, likes to apologize first of all for speaking out of turn to the board.
Oh.
Uh, my apologies, uh, one of the things is, uh, a lot of our children identify, uh. With visuals, so, uh, like Joel said, maybe just having an identifier versus the black shirt, like when I go to the pool, I see a black shirt. I can't really see especially if the attendant is sitting in the shadow. Whereas having a white shirt with red letters that just says pool attendant, um, with the cart right that we have here, with, uh, Mount Creek. You know, most of the lifeguards are identified with white bread, so just having our kids or, or even the adults be able to identify what the pool attendants are. I think would be helpful, if you said it.
That's, that's my. Fantastic.
That's a good idea, yeah, thank you. Next, a moment.
When, yeah, can we have your managers, can we, oh, I'm sorry, Rita Caplo, thank you. Big schedule of events, it was written so minutely that I literally had to take a MacBook and glass. And the office said they have nothing to do with it. So, uh, and that donut drop was not on there. And the activity that you spoke about, I didn't think I saw that, you said some kind of Olympics was something?
So the donut drop was. The calendar was emailed because we had folks graciously step up to volunteer to add it to the calendar, so. Uh, we've added that to the calendar since it was initially published, uh, the Olympics were on there from the beginning, uh, but it's on June thirtieth, so it's on. This may be just difficult to see.
All right, I'm gonna look at the paper. Is it gonna be actually at the pool area, or it's gonna be over here, the Olympics?
It's both, so, um, just like last year, at the first, so there's, it's a full day event, um, we'll start. Um, start over at the, um, in the west wing and in the, uh, the main gym of the entertainment, and we'll do the morning activities. Here at the entertainment, and then we do the afternoon rounds at the pool.
Okay. You said the donut fee is gonna be at the pool this time again.
It's been at the pool for the past few years. So we're at the pool.
We do off season, off season here. Come to the one in the ball or the.
Okay, now, I want to know, why don't we have lifeguards? The pool's only two months out of the year, and you have lots of kids, and you have people like myself that don't have swim. I mean, I go in there, I don't really care.
I, I'll answer that, years ago, to vote. To change, to have no lifeguards, a lot of problems getting lifeguards, because they were college kids, they all left beginning of August. And the, the board three or four years ago went through it and decided, instead of being a. Type one pool where you had to have lifeguards, we went to whatever the authorization is now. And you swim at your own risk, and I see that at, at a lot of places, even the hotels that are left, et cetera, they don't have lifeguards. And that was a board decision made with, after many meetings about it, and it's actually worked. Pretty well, but that, that's why, that's the.
There's another valid reason too, so to that point, um. If the lifeguard calls out. And you got sixty people waiting to go swimming. You're gonna close the pool.
Well, you, you used to always have like two lifeguards, so, and I know it was a problem, but you know, it's hard to get them. But I, I watched a show called Inside Edition, and you have no idea how many kids have drowned, had. Close calls and everything, and I'm saying that most of the parents don't really watch the kids probably at the pool. So you might have a tragedy, but it's way to happen.
And unfortunately, that's kind of the risk associated with it, not that we wouldn't want anybody. You know, to be harmed or anything like that, but. When you, when we opted for that, and that was obviously before a lot of our time, um, when you opt for that type of pool. These, these are the conditions that you accept. It's either that or we go in the pool and people can't go swimming because there are no lifeguard on duty.
How about the idea of entertainment?
Uh, we have a band coming on the sixth.
Yeah, but we used to have shows, we didn't have it every week.
Scheduled for August, the cabaret.
Rita, I, I, I don't think you're ever gonna see the show, you're talking. That, that, we, we don't have the facilities for that, and the reason they had stopped that in the beginning, because we were spending. You know, it was, I believe it was thirty thousand a year on, on shows. And nobody was coming.
So we, and then we tried, we have, we have a band for the, there was a band for the fourth last, and it was for popular, we have a different act this summer. We have a, um, we've engaged or are engaging a singer for cabaret night, uh, which, uh, one of the folks in this room brought to our attention last summer, we're gonna redo that. That was successful, um, we are talking about booking at least one more musical act, um, at some point during summer, uh, you know, we. Out of state secret, there's a forty thousand dollar events and activities budget, we try to provide the most value for that budget that we're told to, and, and that. And providing, you know, within that music is one of the things we do, that's about what we can afford within that. In, sort of in the context for all of the other events activities that.
All right, well, there's still a lot of people who would like to have, and the cabaret, they did a number of years, I don't know about last year's, they probably. I probably went and didn't remember, a number of years ago, they had one, and he laid took care of, and it was fat, it really was. And that was not paid, that was not outside people, that was local people tattooing.
So, I also think we would love to see you at the events committee meetings during the winter, while we are planning summer activities, and hearing about is for wel- welcome, it's for value. Thank you.
Lee, did you go now? Sorry, finished? Rita?
Thank you, okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
You were talking about the, uh, pool attendants. Yesterday at the pool, it started to rain, and there were questions, people say, oh, I think I heard thunder. Since they're not lifeguards. Can these, do these attendants? Monitor that and are they able to evacuate the pool?
In fact, when I was home. Uh. Thumping, and I live in Rockville as well, thunder, and I went right on, Jenna got right up out of her desk and. Went outside to take care of them.
So they, they. I just wondered.
However, we didn't get. People that. Question their authority and stay in the pool and, you know, so, but.
But we, we.
It is being.
They should have. And, and as far as kids being kids, I mean, I've been. There are people who, if there's a kid in the adult pool, they say, why aren't they in the kiddie pool? That's not fair to the kids, they should be able to be in the big pool. Uh, I've even seen them tossing an earth ball with an adult, and to me, it, there's nothing wrong with it if they're not disturbing anyone. So we have to be a little careful about making such rigid rules that nobody has fun, as somebody said before.
It's a family pool. And an activity pool, it is not exclusively an adult.
Because I've heard adults complain, why aren't the kids in the kiddie?
It's a family.
And that's not fair to the kids.
Absolutely.
I don't have to follow to it.
All playing in this pool. Which is gonna say, well, that person's playing pool, playing camera, play pool.
I think there are people.
So, hello everyone, um, Jose, this is ninety eight Club Lane. Or whoever's watching. Um, I wanna bring up the issue, so it, um, I don't think everyone is aware, unless you've seen the reports or anything on what happened, so a few weeks ago. Uh, what Michael and Patrick brought to the table here at this meeting was that I approached. Um, someone that was writing an A T V, looked like a child in the back of his A T V as well, and I videotaped as I approached anybody who's writing out there. For my own safety and obviously for proof for Michael to have and law enforcement and his board that. In this case, I videotaped the gentleman, who then I told him he was trespassing and stated, fuck you, went on. The whole setup, then takes off, I shut off the phone, I'm going back to the car. I hear the A T V coming straight at me, I turn around, he's playing chicken now. I haven't used the barge, I stand there, he zooms around me. And then pulls out a big rock and says he's gonna put it through the windshield of the car, I told him to be my guest, go for it, see where that takes you. Alright, because then I was gonna beat his ass at that point, so, I'm gonna be straight up to everyone. This is going on in the golf course, I apologize for the cursing, because I'm angry right now, but. And I'm angry because I brought this up numerous times for this boy, alright? Um, this is not the first time, this happened a few years ago, and I had about ten of them back there this time. And we called the police, state troopers, I mean, A T V police showed up, I mean, they came with everything. Alright, because the individual tried to hit me also with the A T V while I was on the phone with nine one one, and they heard it. So in this case, they themselves, uh, just had everyone and their mother come out there. So I had sheriff, I had Monticello police, the troopers showed up. Guys, I'm telling, you know, board, this community, it will become alive, but it's not if, it's when it happens. I'm not gonna stop, I'm gonna continue going back there and I'm gonna continue confronting them until this stops. I had asked this boy numerous times, alright, not just this one, even the previous board, alright? Which I even sat out on that board myself, I was bringing it up myself to all the meetings, alright? That we need to start educating, when that happened, when Michael put out emails, it stopped for a while, so it worked very well. So one of the things I've mentioned numerous times is a three-step process, you know, we educate the community, uh, by sending out emails to everyone. And not just to our community, but to Lake Louise and Wolf Lake. This board could sit down with them, speak to them, or Michael, and send out their. Um, the email to their members as well, because we do believe that some of the Wolf Lake, uh, Lake Louise individuals are right. And I can tell you, I witnessed it, because Wolf Lake I followed, and there were three bikers a month ago. And they haven't come back around, and they stopped and said, why are you following us? And I said, because you're trespassing, and I wanted to get, you know, proof of who it was. And they admitted they were Wolf Lake, and they've done it in the past, and they grew up with, as kids doing this, so. They haven't come around, so we do have the other H O A's also coming on to our program. Um, so that's one that I wanted to do. Number two, which is, I appreciate Patrick and Michael all working on it, uh, because I found out after the report that, um. The police department has the A T V, you know, patrols and everything, um. So with that, one of the things I was thinking of, and possibly something you guys could think of, is somehow maybe giving us, meaning the homeowners around the golf course. Some kind of caretaker, you know, so whatever it is, when we do call the police. They have the authority to go onto the property, or somehow the board. Works it out with the police department, where they have full permission to go on to property at all times. Because one of the things that the sheriff's department said is that they don't have permission to go onto the property to do any kind of arrest. Because it belongs to Emerald Brim, private property, in the past belonged to the doctor, which was a whole different subject, but now it belongs to us, so it's easier procedure now. So just give them that permission, or give us the permission as homeowners. Then I hear what Michael brought up, which is true, but you gotta understand, not every homeowner feels safe, they're scared. Some of the homeowners have said it, they're scared, because when they call nine one one, they have to give their name, they give their address. And then, some of them are senior citizens, so they don't wanna make that phone. Knowing that this is what goes on, me personally, I don't care, I pick up the phone, and I will be that pain in the ass, again, excuse me. Um, but that's the problem with that, so the making of, you know, uh, calling nine one one is not gonna happen from a lot of the homeowners there. They're, they're scared, yes.
And you just, for somebody who's a new person calling, can you just go over what they ask if somebody does, they ask for your name, do they ask for?
You absolutely can make an anonymous nine one one call, absolutely, you do not have to give your name.
You're one hundred percent correct, Patrick, but, um, they do ask. You're one hundred percent correct, Patrick, but, um, they do ask. They ask and then some people shut down. One of my neighbors had told me that when they asked his name and address, he shut down. He didn't know that and he just hung up the phone and then they kept calling him back.
Information of who, like, is it a?
They asked him his, his name, his address, you know, you know, and then they said, um, what is it that's out there? ATV?
Before, we had the problem with people from the outside. You're making a sound, like, you have a problem with people.
Well, I can't say that. It did happen once or twice with those who live here. And I don't think I've seen that anymore. I'll be honest with you. I think now it's more. I agree with Michael. It might be Wolf Lake and Lake Louise. Uh, Wolf Lake I've already seen twice. So the last one with those three young men who were actually riding, I followed them down Wolf Lake Road, videotaping the whole thing. And then they finally pulled over and spoke with me and the whole set.
At some, at some point, even if the sheriff department didn't have permission to get on the property, they're gonna leave.
Hmm, so yes. So that's why the sheriff will patrol around the outside, uh, because if they catch one on the road, they have them there right away.
Can you just, uh, outline your three steps?
Yes. So the, it, the.
Get it in our minutes and then we can address that.
I appreciate it. Thank you. So, um, educate the community and the, uh, the HOAs around us. Um, working with the police department and some, not besides, beside patrolling, maybe giving, uh, the homeowners when they call, yep. And the third one, um, is guys immediately starting the, um, Emerald Green project. Alright, let's, because once you see that in place, um, I think that will put a stop to this all. Um, because not only are they trespassing, but now they'll be destroying private property. So now we have them on that as well.
You were, you say the Greenway project.
The Greenway project, yeah. And you know, we talked about it. I think, uh, this board is working on it. I appreciate that. Um, so as soon as possible, coming up with some kind of path that could be done and then we can start working on the volunteers. I said I would be more than happy. There's a couple of homeowners who would, you know, be, you know, happy to participate in that. But we can start with something simple, mulching, the whole setup, and then that from there. My, you know, my, I think it will. But those are the three things. The educating the, the community is the, is the start of all this. Uh, my best rumors times with emails, no emails are going out this summer. Should've went out already. This board should be pushing for the email. Police department tried to identify the individual, um, opened the picture, the video. We, uh. Took an actual still picture as well from it and enlarged it. Then they compare it to whatever they have cuz there was some identification as far as, um. Tattoos and all that, but they can't, you know, they couldn't pick off of that. And there was no plates on it, so they now know that ATV is illegally driving around. Um, so it is what it is. Yeah, but you know, uh, I'm a firm believer, if, if they see them out there, like you stated, they catch them then, right? They catch them out on city, on the streets now. They got them on different regulations now. So now they're violating DOT regulations and things like that. Different laws and playing.
Three signs, it was a beautiful house, private property. Did you see that? There's three signs, five iron soul cast, nation brought it up. Is that the way that was put up? Was it?
Just for the sake of the time of the meeting, we're just gonna kind of move the, the comment section.
See, see all the walking to have this conversation following the meeting. The point of community comments is to keep coming.
So, so, I'm sorry. So those are the three steps, I think, and, and gone over and it's proven already, some of it works. The, uh, last one obviously is moving forward, which I want to add to that. Um, the previous board had allocated money. For the golf course. It was twenty four thousand, allocated for it, twenty five, twenty five thousand. Um, that money is still it. It was allocated and approved for it. Um, so there's supposed to be money there for this. Um, doesn't mean we have to use it for the boulders or anything, but we can at least move quickly and start doing something. Um, just to get the process going and, and identify that, uh, that nature walking line, which kind of, it's not just for summer, it's winter. You got snow shoeing, you got frostbite ski. There's a lot of nice things that could happen with that, which will probably be one of the first communities to have something like that.
So I don't wanna drag this comment section out any longer, but as far as the nature way goes, your property. But.
Oh, yeah.
That, so you and the other homeowners there would be perfectly fine with groups of families walking through.
It, it's a beautiful thing. We've seen it last summer after the last incident. I wanna mention, bring that to you then, what happened, um. There, uh, Michael had emails go on, I think, twice. They allowed, pushed it and, you know, everyone worked together to get the emails out. We didn't see the bikes for the summer. What we saw were actual families out there. We saw some kids riding on their mountain bikes with. You know, families walking their dogs. That was awesome. It's nice to sit in the back and see children and kids. Listen, I, I have four kids. They're adults already. But this is all going to the community, right? So that's what I would love to see back then. I'm not, I have no problem with that. Um, and even the idea of setting up, um, like, um, athletic, you know, bars and things like that, push up things. That's wonderful. So it's a nice thing to have.
But I will look forward to seeing you at the next strategic planning and finance committee and, and really appreciate your ideas and get involved.
Thank you, Patrick. I was gonna say that, I think we've. We've started to look at that within strategic planning committee. Been for a while. We've thought that by too long. We have to look at it. I think you are, your, the sense of urgency in these ideas is, is heard. We'll hold a meeting this month and we'll. Get you, get you involved. And I think you're right. We can start moving on some, moving on that more quickly.
No, thanks. Appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, if, if I, I could say real quickly, this has nothing to do with the golf course, only cuz I was listening and all some things. Um, on the pool security, I just wanted to throw out there. I mean, we, again, some individuals, you know how I felt about security to begin with. I mean, paying for someone to have security when we have all these cameras. I think we spent over eighty grand for these camera systems. Um, I don't understand why we just don't go, you know, a little bit deeper into the camera setups and, uh, use that more. To, to cover us because, uh, security guards unfortunately have been proven to not really work. They don't deter anything. Um, but the cameras are recording. Um, there's swiping systems in place, so we know who's coming on to the property. I mean, that combined with the camera systems, you can go a step further and have license plate readers, so we'll see the vehicles as well. Um, I really, you know, believe that deters the most, um, and this. A lot of proof on it. We have, um, a lot of data over. I work for the Metropolitan Authority System, which is the largest agency in New York State. And, uh, that's all they use now. They, they've gotten away from security guards cuz they're useless. So they just use camera systems and the swiping. That combined, they catch nearly everybody all the time, you know, because of that. So something to think about. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you guys.
Anybody else in the, oh, come on up, please.
You have, um.
Yep, I know. They're gonna, we're gonna get to them next.
Hi, I'm Wendy Anson. My husband, Olus, and I, we live on Surrey. And I just had a question or comment or whatever about, uh, the lake, a question, I guess, more so. So this is, we're two and a half years. We're here. Uh, I'm just wondering, historically, has this happened before? Okay, so I'm just concerned about the recovery because now we're seeing like all the grass and everything come in where. And if, even, even if the water comes back, is that grass still gonna be there because it's now?
Yeah, the, the grass, the grass below, once the water's there, but we may see an increase in the lily patch. This one. And that's why I was kind of hesitant to say. What we're gonna end up doing this fall because it may come right back and we may have to do it again. A free skill again and, uh, drop it. However, there, there is some. Some look into taking some of the stumps out by some of the homeowners on Surrey.
Yeah.
So that if that does come to fruition, we'll probably have to drop for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um. But we have to have, it has to be done. We have to have that closed by March fifteenth. Normal schedule when we close. This year was open a little bit longer because of trying to coordinate with, with the stuff. Then we didn't have the snowpack. We usually have, so that's an impact on the spring as well.
You know, cuz like you guys, I'm sure we bought lakefront because we wanted to be on the lake and now we're on the mud. And we can't get to the lake. Um.
So when the water level comes back up, is it thin if you can buy it, it's a wide rake, razor blades on the side, shore, boat can throw it out there. You can pull through the water, cut the little pit, then the little pit will just fall to the bottom. So, you know, it was supposedly they'll die. And then you can get the best.
Okay, and my other question was about the, the board stance on that treasure lake development, whatever it's called. Um, do you have a standing on that? Is it, is the proposed development zoned? Is it zoned correctly? Like, are they okay within the zoning or you don't even know?
Yeah, we're, we're not sure yet. We're still fact gathering, um, and our, you know, I, I can't say what our position is cuz I don't know that we've. Formulated one. Um, we're still learning a bit more about the history of the lot, um, the zoning and what's being proposed there. Um, so that, that's as much as, as we know right now, but, uh, it's something that we're actively taking on as an additional, um. Uh, single issue that we're gonna look into.
Thanks.
I spoke with the owner of the property yesterday. He was on Glove Lane yesterday. And, uh, when brought to attention, you know, what's going on there and this and that, and he said to me, um, he was making a private community. Alright, homes are selling at five hundred thousand minimum. It's gonna have its own pool, its own, um, or temple, the whole setup. It's gonna be fully gated and it will be an HOA according to him. Just wanted to throw that out there. That was his exact words. He was on the block cuz he got a house on Glove Lane, he's building. Alright.
One question regarding this, and it's the only question I really have. Is it? If there's a rumor going around that it's gonna, this would fence all. Uh, homeowners, current homeowners on the lake, access to the lake. Is that?
Well, why don't we discuss? We're gonna have an executive session. Let's discuss. I just, it's my suggestion.
Mine, it's my question cuz there's homeowners that are approaching me on this and I just want the truth. It, it's the truth, that's all.
But, but, just, you know, yeah, he did say.
That's the gospel.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, 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 I would, let, let's be careful on rumors. Uh, we don't have any information to suggest that that would be the case, but we'll learn more. Uh, and we'll talk about it more in our executive session.
Any other questions in the room? And then we're moving to quickly, please, and then we're gonna have to.
Few years ago, Nice sent a whole team in and met with the owners. It's quite a few want just to have electrical.
Nice, that you said?
Nice, again, of the electric company. I know this past winter when I was away, astronomical bill, and I wasn't even home. And so I went and tried to find out what, what, and I was wondering if they could, if Emerald Green could have them come again.
Aileen Dunther's office, she are, Aileen Dunther's office.
Is that how it was? It wasn't coordinated through us too? Cuz it was, I, I felt very beneficial. And, um, like the electricist, like sky high.
I will contact. She, she, they have liaisons in their office.
Okay, alright, thank you.
No problem. Okay, line, we have Donna Goldoff. Go ahead.
I, I mean, thank you. First of all, I wanna say that thank you to the board. Having the pool this past week has been wonderful and I wanna give my, uh. Thanks for that. Two things specifically. First of all, about the ATVs. I was walking on the back road, Old Sackett, uh, a few days ago and the sheriff's car. Just stopped and said, have you seen ATVs going here? So obviously he had been called. And I said, not right now. Thank you so much for monitoring this. He was very nice. So it seems that there is some monitoring. Okay. My other point about this whole thing about lifeguards versus security, and I thought the white shirt was a great idea. The one thing I think we have to be very strong about is, uh. Uh, diapers in the big pool. And clearly, I was sitting with Carla. Clearly, it's hard, but you could see clearly some infants are not trained. Now, maybe there, uh, once I observed it myself and I went to, um, Earl. You know, uh, the security Earl, he was very nice. He said, let me wait a few minutes. So it's not, the pool wasn't very crowded. It's not conspicuous that you complained. Maybe we need a protocol that, uh. The peep, the girls or member working at the pool itself, then go to tell Earl. And he comes in and addresses the problem. Listen, we have rules. If the security there, young, are not going to. Even try to re- enforce the rules. I don't see what the purpose of them is. They're sitting there. Kids were clearly really diving. And if someone hits their head. I think that's gonna come back to bite us. So these are some of the things that have to be addressed. But diapers in the big pool, to me, is the biggest concern because. That could ruin the pool for a few days for all of us. Okay. Uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy, for Brad.
Thank you. Yeah. Um, a couple of things. I wanted to, you know, go to the townhouses. Um, I think it would be super helpful. I'm looking at this meeting and there are twenty four people on and a lot of those are board members. I think it's something the entire community needs to be aware of and an email going out to everyone would be very helpful on that. Also, on the proposal, they are planning to use Emerald Green Water and Emerald Green Sewer. Um, they do have a pool on the plan, so is that, do they plan to build their pool through Emerald Green Water? So I think these are concerns that everyone should be aware of. Um, on the pool rules, you know, there's been a lot of talk about that. Um, I think again, an email to everybody cuz we only have twenty four people here. Um, letting them know that these are the rules they need to be enforced and maybe. What happens if they're not? You know, that parents are reminded that maybe they get a warning and that if it continues, maybe there's some. Further steps that can be taken as in maybe their cards inactivated for a day, a week, whatever, but I think that, you know. Their help needs to be, uh, put out there because it's, it's obviously not working on its own. Um, so for the greenway, I think it's a wonderful thing and I'm glad that there's gonna be at least some, you know, looking into the ATVs. Cuz we've heard them zooming through Scarborough and a lot of other roads as well. Um, I don't know if there's a plan for parking there, but if we expect people in the community to use it, then I guess we need a place for people to park. And then, um, question about the pool. I, I heard that, um, the, the, uh. The gates have been, you know, remedied and that's really good, but the, the pool dock gate. I have myself stuck my fingers through the bars of the, the, um, fence. And touched the, um, button on the other side and that opens the gate. So until or unless that's remedied, I've seen other people do it and anybody, you know, is gonna be able to go out and use our dock. Um, I know there was some vandalism on boats and that's certainly a concern, so I just wondered if that's been addressed. So, thank you.
Go ahead, Barbara. You can unmute yourself.
Oh, okay. Wait a minute. Yeah, you can hear me, right? Okay, so, uh, two issues. One is Treasure Lake. I live on Treasure Lake. And, um, thank you, Rich Brown, for organizing the meeting last week about that and, um. I just wanna clarify something. One is that normally you, um, close the dam March first, right, Michael?
Between March first and March. Yes.
And this year it was closed when? What date?
Later in April.
Later in April. So six to eight weeks later than normal. Correct?
Yes, it was around April fifteenth.
And, and you said there was some, you thought there was some minor issue with the dam that maybe there was some leaking. Did you say that? Sorry. Okay, don't, don't worry. Forget it. We'll talk, talk. We don't, it's not a big issue. And then, um, so I just want a lesson learned that we. Clearly, we can never leave the dam, uh, open after March first because. It is now almost July and I. And I've been here solid six weeks and I've been measuring the lake level, it's gone up four inches. Uh, so at that rate, um, it'll be the end of the summer, if we're lucky, that it will be back to normal. So um, can we have some regulations somewhere that we will avoid at all cost? Keep the dam open after March first? We've learned a lesson, so let's, let's, you know, take this opportunity to, to incorporate this in the regulations.
Well, it isn't really regulations, I mean, we, we've dropped the lake level in, in August. Um, if we're, we're having torrential rains coming, you know, we, we drop the lake level because big storms are coming and they're looking, the state notifies us to drop the lake level. But as, as the whole, yes, as long as, that, there was work. There was work going on that they were going to remove stuffs. That's the whole purpose. It wasn't closed because there were homeowners, group of homeowners looking to remove stuffs. And they were working on a permit, the permit was coming, but then it was.
Yeah, I understand.
Right, but so that's the reason of it, I don't think normally every year we're going to have people applying for uh, for you know, yes, it'll, it'll be closed. I guess that's the best.
Okay, okay, but I just wanna, you know, I, anyway, let's move on, the second question is um, about the townhouses uh, across the lake from me on Treasure Lake Road. And number one, Emerald, everyone should understand, Emerald Green owns Treasure Lake. So there's no way that this new development can stop us using the lake and so on. So that's important that everyone understands that. Um, but the second thing is that um, a group of us uh, signed up for this training for the, what they call the Citizen Science Lake Association. And we've uh, started testing the waters in Lake Louise Marie and Treasure Lake. And it's very opportune that actually we were able to do it this year, because Treasure Lake will be a baseline in terms of the uh, quality of the water. And we know that Treasure Lake is actually cleaner than, than Lake Louise Marie, but that's another issue. But in the course of this training that we did with a very knowledgeable DEC employee, uh, Arlene Onion, she told us that there are several studies out, one particular one she sent me, and I think everyone on the board and uh, Town of Thompson should read this. That they've done a lot of studies on the relationship between uh, lake wa, lake and river watershed and urban or high density development. And they, they establish a rule that the urban development surrounding a lake such as ours should not be greater than twenty five percent of the land, the watershed land compared to the um, the lake land. Um, Treasure Lake is already at forty five percent. So we're already have far greater urban development where the watershed is affecting the quality of the water in our lakes than is um, reasonable. And she, and she made the point, if we go above twenty five percent, most towns are incorporating into their management that we have to have lake management. In other words, we have to manage the quality of the water, both for uh, the fauna and the flora in the lake, that we don't get what, you know, what's happened now with uh, growth of weeds. And Lake Louise Marie, it's a drinking, uh, the quality of the drinking water. So two major issues are at stake when we talk about urban development in and around Treasure Lake, in the watershed for Treasure Lake. So I think we can talk about, he has the right to, to build blah, blah, blah. We also have a right to a, a livable environment. And right now that is threatened, ser- seriously threatened at Treasure Lake. And I think we have a right as a community to argue against further development surrounding this lake. It's a very fragile lake. Um, it's, I think Tom Hand across the lake said, there are four or five species that are threatened um, that live in this lake. And um, that, that would be my argument against this development. It's been used elsewhere, I don't know why we don't have the courage to go ahead and fight this um, development.
I'm just saying we do or don't. Um, but uh, in any event, I would encourage you and certainly others um, who are um, as knowledgeable and concerned about those issues to make yourselves known to the Town of Thompson Planning Board. We can only, um, you know, do so much ourselves, but we will be discussing um, our position and level of advocacy in our executive session coming up. But um, I would ask as well, if you wouldn't mind just emailing the um, survey results or, or study that you talked about um, and guidelines that you talked about, um, and that'll help us out as well, okay?
Great.
Publicly, we're not gonna say much more.
No, I know, and thank you for all your advocacy, it's great, thank you.
I'm actually gonna make a motion to move into executive session, so.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
I gotta go, like ten minutes. Talk about this, I could do things to say about it.
Carvin, hang on, hang on, hang on, Brittany, can you stop the recording?